Welcome everyone to the, wow. November 10th Special Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Madi Sella, would you please do a roll call?
Commissioner Vanderstark.
Present.
Commissioner Kapalongo.
Present.
Commissioner Pro.
Present.
Vice Chair Adam.
Present.
Chairman Frost.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. If everyone would please rise, I've asked Commissioner Pro to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. This is our first agenda where we have changed things around just a little bit and put "Call to the Public" first off, and so let me read that. "Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Individual commission members may respond to criticisms made, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the commission shall not discuss nor take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action." And so since this call to the public, is there any public in attendance who would like to make any comments to the commission this evening? Seeing no one jumping up and coming to the lectern, we'll close that. And we'll go to discussion, approval or disapproval of the minutes from the regular meeting conducted on October 6, 2002. So commission members, any comments, concerns, questions?
Nothing here.
Just for everyone's information, I did see a few typos and grammatical things that I afforded to Madi Sella, and they're reflected in the minutes now, and so with that, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve, excuse me, the meeting minutes with the corrections as submitted by Chair Frost.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes from October 6. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Looks like we're unanimous on that. Thank you.
Can I ask who was the second again?
Oh, I'm sorry. New business: Presentation, approval, approval conditions or denial of a design review application, PC-22-29 by On Point Architecture for an RV/boat/mini storage facility called Roadrunner Storage. Site is located at the northwest corner of Franklin Road and Ataway Road alignment. Madi Sella, is there a staff presentation on this?
So the Roadrunner Storage Facility is located at the northwest corner of Ataway, the Ataway alignment, since the road's not quite there, and Franklin Road. So it's about close to 4,000 feet back from the Franklin-Hunt Highway intersection. This piece of land is currently zoned as a planned unit development. It's been called the Mahoney PUD, and that planned unit development was approved with stipulations in 2008. The ordinance that shows those stipulations can be found in the packet, probably the very last page. This site is 6.5 acres, and the developer has it set for RV, boat, and self-storage as a use. The Mahoney PUD specifically was created to allow this use, as they were planning to develop it back in 2008 as that, but that never panned out with the recession. But the PUD does not set specific density or height standards for this site. This we kind of set ourself as the town to make sure it was nothing, now that we had great experience with RV storage facilities coming into the town, we were able to make sure that nothing was too overboard or was in good standing. There are setback standards listed in the ordinance for the front and side, and that is specifically set aside for landscaping. The site will have one axis going into the facility and one axis coming out. Both of them are on Franklin Road, and both gates have emergency access measures for fire or NOX boxes. And that was reviewed by our fire marshal at the time. This is an overview site plan. All of the storage facilities in the main building are set back greatly from their property line, and it is just the overall look at how it's going to be. This is what the front is going to look like, the very front elevation looking in from The site will have 374 storage spaces. 107 will be for RV and 267 will be self-storage. Some of those will be shaded, some of those will be AC, but not all of them. So all are set back greatly. There's the 15s already there. The height for the main front building is 20 feet and 2 inches, and the height for the RV coverings is only 18 feet and 2 inches. So putting that to residential standards, which has a maximum of 30 feet, this is well below any of that. Staff stipulated that applicants are required to pave 28 feet of the road going to the site, so there is asphalt paving going to it to ensure the best accessibility. And this was also stipulated in the ordinance set for the PUD. And the facility will be enclosed by a 7-foot wall. I meant to say painted, not printed. It'll be masonry and will also have stucco. And those wall colors will be more of a brown and a light brown as well, and these complement the Anthem walls that are just to the south of, just across from the site. So here's a look at the different elevations of the main building with your self-storage. And here's a look at the wall that'll be going across. On-site, there will be six parking spaces available in front of the rental office. Nine other spaces will be located within the facility for employees as well as those using the self-storage. That comes to a total of 14 spaces with one ADA, which exceeds our one space per 200 square feet with office standard. The layout provides paved aisles, allowing for un-rep to drive throughout the facility for customers and employees. The applicant has turned in a traffic impact statement, and they found that at peak, we're looking at a general, about 6 to 8 daily trips. The front will provide the minimum 15-foot landscape buffers, and the Ataway alignment will also have another 15-foot landscape buffers. Both of these have plants that are in correlation or complement what is already found in Anthem, and there are also plants that are listed and found in the Penile AMA for low water usage. The applicant plans to add light fixtures throughout the facility for better visibility and security, and we had made sure that these lights were shielded to reduce any light flow outside of the project itself. So the storage facility will not front Hunt Highway, and it will be well set back from the main area. The Town Development Code and the Anthem at Merrill Ranch, H.O.A., does not allow front-street storage of RVs, so this is a great opportunity to take advantage of that commercial need and demand within our community, and the use will be contained and screened. Staff finds that this request is in compliance with the Mahoney PUD's required uses, as well as their ordinance stipulations and Town Code. We recommend approval of the design review, along with the conditions in the staff report. And those suggested conditions are listed here. With that, I will bring up the applicant to provide their own presentation, as well to go into more detail about what this facility will be.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Nicole Poston. I'm the Registered Architect and owner of On Point Architecture, and the owner, Tom Doll, of Roadrunner Storage is directly behind me in the blue shirt. I'll show you. Marcel hit most of what I was going to say, so I'll quickly go through my small presentation. Our P&amp;Z request is for a design review approval of our self-storage facility. It contains 79 covered RV and boat storage facilities near the rear of the site, 28 total uncovered RV and boat storage on the east side of the site, 191 total climate-controlled self-storage units, and 76 exterior access or drive-up self-storage units. There's also on-site a rental office and a small futures manager's quarter. Okay. Kind of highlighted here so you can see a little better. This is the large climate-controlled building that does have some exterior access units. This area right here is the office and the manager quarter, so it's right off the front entry. There is a gate here that is fire access, as well as clientele. They use a keypad to enter. This building is drive-up self-storage interior, non-conditioned self-storage. We have two large RV parking areas for the RVs and the boat storage, as well as uncovered RV parking here. This is all above-grade retention, the trash enclosure, and then the exit gate that takes you back out to Franklin Road. This is our landscape plan. You'll see the landscaping is all along both frontages of Ataway alignment and as well as Franklin Road frontage. All of these trees were found on the Merrill Ranch, right? Merrill Ranch Approved Plant List. This is our board, our color board. We are using a combination of painted CMU, two different types. Painted stucco, metal panels, and a metal roof. This is the rendering of the street view from Franklin. See the arch for the entryway and some glass that you can see into the hallway. And here's our gate. These are the additional elevations of the large building. This would face the west, and this one faces the east. Again, this is pretty far back from the street as well. And there's our little Roadrunner. You can see where I pulled the colors from. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you for that presentation, Commissioners. Questions, concerns, comments?
Nothing here, no. Just to comment, I think that the plan was well put together. I think it fits whatever the needs are for the community, and aesthetically, I think it's beautiful. It adds some value to the community.
Thank you.
That's my opinion.
I had a question. I'm looking at this picture. So this picture fronts Franklin Road.
That's correct.
What do we see from Ataway?
That is this elevation, but this, so there's a wall right here. And so this whole part is, got a 7-foot fence in front of it, plus some parking. So if you look, this side of the building is way away from the road. We'll have a row of trees. This is some uncovered parking, and then the building, plus retention.
So there's a wall and trees?
Yes. This is a 7-foot-high masonry wall all the way around. And it undulates and has stucco and painted CMU, so it has some interest to it.
We, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kapalongo and I were just a little confused because we heard mention of Hunt Highway. And we're not exact, I'm not sure, where, how does this face or intersect with Hunt Highway?
So if you look at this vicinity map, this is Hunt Highway over here.
Right.
And we're almost a mile east of it.
So it's not touching Hunt Highway?
Not even close.
Yeah, there's a traffic light there as well.
And to be, and to be clear, we took the east half of what's called the Mahoney PAD. The west half is still owned by the original owner, I believe. Is that correct, Tom? The west half of Mahoney PAD? We don't own that, right?
Right.
So we are actually taking the east half.
So this is more for town staff, and the traffic impact, because that's what greatly affected my decision on the last storage facility that came up in front of us happened to be an impact to Hunt Highway. It says that because the town of Florence is in the process of developing their traffic impact analysis guidelines. So I guess it's not relevant for tonight, but I think that traffic is a big issue, and it's a consideration. And whenever you hear Hunt Highway, I think we're all very well aware that there's issues there to begin with, so that's why I raised it. But I think this looks very nice, and it's a kind of a minor question, but on the blue, what, why, what are we asking you to do about removing blue from your?
On the top of the screen, fronts the street, I had a blue painted top cap, but they had me remove that and make it the same color as the rest of the wall.
To just blend in a little more.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else?
So we did that.
It's more of a general statement regarding this, and it's nothing against you or your company. I am sick of storage stuff. No, seriously. Florence is going to be known for prisons storing people and storage facilities storing crap. I'm just tired of it. And this, we brought this up at the last meeting, and this is exactly what we're dealing with. This is from 2008, and we're dealing with it now. That's ridiculous. It's nothing against you, but it's ridiculous. Absolutely ridiculous. This should have been revisited every two years. That's all I got.
Okay, I do have a few comments slash questions slash concerns. Franklin was recently signalized at Hunt Highway.
Yes, yes, it was.
And I guesstimated about 3/4 of a mile of roadway between there and your project, which I note in the staff conditions will be paved.
Yes.
28 feet wide of pavement.
Yes.
And that's just inviting speed to me, a long straightaway. And immediately to, I went and drove this, and immediately to the west of the site is a residence. So are we looking at something to try to deal with speeding on that road to kind of at least tone it down as you approach the facility so that, I'm just concerned about a family living next to this commercial facility.
We haven't been told yet. The engineering hasn't been done on that road, so we've been working with Chris Wannamaker, and we will work, continue to work with Chris as that road is developed. We were just told that we have to extend from our street to that connection with a 28-foot-wide pavement.
That's something we can do, is to continue to work with them to figure out a way to not only...
Calm it?
Yeah.
Calm the traffic.
Come, but...
And it might be as simple as a couple of traffic humps or something, just to help people slow down.
Yeah.
Through that area.
Yeah.
So that would be a condition that I would add, is just something to deal with slowing traffic as it comes through that residential part of that, of that area.
Mr. Chairman, you mentioned that traffic light. That's already creating.
Right.
Issues, lots of issues. This is just going to compound that. Nothing against you guys again.
I have a lot of storage facilities. I hear this a lot.
I live there.
Right.
So it's made me crazy with that light. We'd get out on Hunt Highway now.
See, he likes it.
That part of it, it's where it hits that school, and then you have to go, you're going from three lanes down to one. I mean, it's ridiculous.
It does have health, you know, it doesn't matter. It's a hospital Saturday and morning to go get out on Hunt Highway.
Sir, we appreciate your comments, but the public who is listening to this digitally has no idea what they're saying, what you're saying, so if you would like to make comments, you can please approach the lectern and do that, and then you can be on the record, and then the other people who are listening can hear you. If you'd like your comments to be recorded for posterity, we'd appreciate it.
I'm Tim Mahoney, and I was the original guy that started this project years ago, couldn't get financing to do it back in 2008. Luckily, Tom came along and became my partner, but the, it's been a blessing having that light there, because it needed it between the school. Our traffic's going to be very minimal compared to what schools create, or grocery stores, or those kinds of things, you know. It's very low impact. And it's been wonderful since they've got that, because I don't have to sneak through the hospital anymore and go out to that light.
So Mr. Mahoney, just to ask a question. I noted when I drove out there that there are two residences. Are you in the easterly?
I'm living in that little double, I owned, I built that house. The little double light was there when I bought it, years ago. It was a feedlot at one time, just for posterity, and around it was BLM, it's BLM around it, and it was, it was a farm back in the 40s and 50s. And so that was a little feedlot for that farm, and we just built, we built that house there and split it into two large parcels, a 3-acre piece and a 6-acre piece, you know.
Okay, so you...
And the people that live there, they know very well what's going on. They're good friends of mine. They're excited about having payment there. Of course, they don't want to pitch in, but I can't blame them, but they knew, they know full and well what's going on, so. Anyway, they're excited about having that light there, too, because their kids go to school up there.
Great. Well, we appreciate your comments.
You bet. They're great people. Thank you.
Well, the only other concern that I had was eventually when Ataway is built, which I assume it will be, that and Franklin will be some sort of a minor collector, there is a 90-degree corner right there. Are we reserving enough right-of-way to safely make that corner happen?
That I don't know.
That's something that we just, we might want to check with the...
Yeah, we can follow through with the engineer, Chris, to see how that's going to be.
That was my only...
For now in the future.
Another concern, since there's no radius shown on the, on the, on the plan here to just make that, that happen. With that, I'll echo the comments made here, that I think your aesthetics are very nice. I think it's a nice-looking facility, so. Any other comments or concerns? Nope, very good. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, excuse me, that we approve PZ-22-29, Design Review Application by On Point Architecture for the RV Boat Mini Storage Facility called Roadrunner Storage with the stipulations made by staff and by Chair Frost to try to slow down the traffic in that area at Franklin and Ataway, and to have a look at that 90-degree corner for
I would second that motion.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Looks like we're 5-0, so it moves forward. The recommendation...
I'm actually a nay.
You actually did a nay?
Yeah.
Okay, a 4-1, sorry. Okay. Item number seven, and thank you for coming out and making the presentation. We appreciate you coming and doing that. Presentations for information only. Number, the first one, agriculture/solar uses. I believe Commissioner Adam, this is something you requested.
All right. So we had a question about agrivoltaics last, and how that can be incorporated into our own development. So I actually had a brush-up on it, because I wasn't 100% about the topic itself, but it's pretty much agriculture underneath solar panels. The benefits are the crops provide, are provided shade by the panels, and because of that shade, they use less water because there's less direct sunlight on, so it's better for water conservation. And the cooling effect of the plants releasing evaporation up, back onto the solar panels helps cool those down as well. And it allows for a double use of this land, and not just for complete solar or complete agriculture. Double use. So as known, agriculture works best for plants that grow well in partial shade. This, so some potential crops include hog peanuts, alfalfa, yam, taro, cassava, sweet potato, and lettuce. It has been shown by researchers done, and a lot of this research came, I just want to give reference to, all this research came from the University of Arizona and their agriculture and development and geography. So they found that all of those crops are good at growing under these solar panels. However, they found that wheat and cotton are not as successful, cotton being one of the main crops out here. But another, on the good side, alfalfa is also something that can be grown underneath, which is another big crop found within the town of Florence. They've also seen successful growth in tomatoes, charred kale, cabbages, and onions. Some other information is the Midwest already uses kind of this multi-use method, where they have the solar panels, but to keep down on weeds and other pests, they have goats and cats that go around the facilities. This is also a method used in Germany and Netherlands to help grow things like strawberries and blueberries and other fruits. Coquenino County has actually started to include or refer this in their 2021 comprehensive plan. Now, the pros are we have this multi-use property. We have water conservation, and it's more than just engineers going out to check on these panels. We actually have the engineers, and then we also have farmers and other people, so this creates more job potential. Some cons are there are more complex, and it's more complex. You not only deal with the solar farm, but you're also dealing with the farming around it. You have to make sure the dirt's not compact, or the certain conditions are being met for both uses. So this requires specialized maintenance that may cost more for these solar farms and people developing them. Something I also found as a cons, what requirements would we need to set for these uses? I'm not quite sure between solar and agriculture what requirements are needed and how we can blend them to make sure that there's a good compromise and balance. I did look and see if there are any other cities within Arizona currently having this in their zoning code. I have not seen any. They're mostly referred in ordinances that have to do with renewable energy and overall research done at universities. So no nearby city have I seen actually dedicate this use or have requirements set for it. So this is definitely something we'd kind of have to research, and moving forward, it's kind of a first-time thing, and we'd really have to consider when adding that into our Town Code. I do see the definite benefits. We've had people who come in, in pre-op meetings, looking to use their land as this use. So it's something that's definitely going to happen moving forward, and I see the merit in researching it. Are there any questions or comments?
Thank you. I think that, I think it's great. It's, how, do we wait until the first application comes in, or do we start considering it? I think we're in a good spot now to start considering and just looking, what would it take? Let's just say we had an applicant right now, what would we have to do in our code to allow that? I know we're really early on in the curve, because this has really not been proven, but the U of A has the, I guess, one of the most far advanced experiments already going on at the Biosphere, right? So they're already trying this, and they're, they're getting some results, and as you said, alfalfa is something that we grow. So I appreciate you looking at this, and I guess we just keep close to it, and...
At this time, if we did get an application, because our code says no use, you know, the list of uses is not limited to what's within the code, it's something that we would have to bring to the commission for probably a conditional use permit, or just to see if that use would be proper for the zoning they're looking to put it in.
Well, I remember our former town manager saying, when we started with all the solar farms, that he wasn't 100% sold on it because it ties their land up for 30 years, and after 30 years, what happens with all these solar panels? So to me, since solar is here and growing anyway, if there's a way we can get more bang for the buck, and as I said, someone's got to grow our food. Alfalfa is a critical component of our economy for the state of Arizona, and we don't want to lose those alfalfa farms, so if there's a way that we can kind of combine, I think it makes a lot of sense.
Something I learned at the Historic Preservation Conference in Yuma is if alfalfa and cotton are not the most, what's the word? Most highly profitable. So Yuma is one, has one of the highest GDPs for agriculture, and they mostly grow fruits and vegetables. So if the alfalfa and cotton are no longer something that's viable in the county because of their high water usage, and vegetables are, we may, may come out in front when it comes to profitability when growing more vegetables. and vegetables are, we may, may come out in front when it comes to profitability when growing more vegetables and fruits. Uh, that's just an idea, but I'm not a farmer, so I couldn't fully go into that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, just a comment from my view. I, I don't understand what the risk would be to the town to go, you know, to allow this to go forward. There, there are, what's the, what would the risk be? There's, so, I mean, I would.
We just have to make sure the solar planner, the sol, solar planners aren't like reflecting onto roads, or make sure they're not too high, or something, just some other basic design standards we'd kind of have to look at.
Yeah, okay.
Just, just a quick comment, in a previous life, I had experience doing this on, in recharge basins, where we're recharging water back into the ground, and we put solar panels in those basins, and the trick. There we go. The, the, the trick there was mounting them high enough that we could get the equipment underneath them to maintain the basins with weed growth and, and tilling the basins to, so that we could do recharge. But that's, that's one thing, is that they won't look normal because they'll be mounted quite high so that the farming equipment can get underneath them. So there's a, there's a few trade-offs there, but it's a, it's a neat multi-use concept because essentially the ground is useless under most solar farms. So I applaud Commissioner Adam for getting this thinking about this. Okay, any other comments?
I, I think along the same lines, I read that Gila River is the first installation that's getting solar over the canals, which makes a lot of sense, because to me, okay, we have a water problem, and we have open canals, and there's that huge evaporation issue, right? So I think we may be out in front of thinking about all this in Arizona.
It'd be fun to do the first one in the state here, that'd be cool. Agrivoltaic, that'd be, that'd be really awesome. Okay, B, downtown parking question.
Chairman, you had a question about what we were doing about down, parking the downtown as it relates to the general plan. Uh, we didn't have anything about parking the general plan, but we did have it in our redevelopment plan, which focused on the downtown and Main Street. So currently, what is available sustains, sustains the town for now. For what events we use it for, and how often you see full parking every day, what we have now is, meets what we need. Most parking areas are owned by the town along Main Street. The largest parking area we have that's close to the vicinity is Heritage Park. We do allow on-street parking, which is good for people from the outside coming in. On-site parking is not required for new businesses in the downtown commercial zone, and a lot of what is there is just what's been there for years. Now, the redevelopment plan calls for long-term planning on downtown parking. So that is, what I look into is more of the long-term. Currently, we don't have any ideas for new parking sites, and none, not any are being reviewed at this point. However, looking at a map at our current parking, it is spread out. The only thing that makes it helpful is that we do have good walkability within the downtown. We have a lot of sidewalks, we have crossings. So it's good that they can still park outside and come in, and that there are still parking areas located nearby. However, some challenges we've found are most infill spaces are not owned by the town, or they have a building on it. We have pretty high density in the downtown already, not just historically, we just always had buildings around. But those that are there, that are not going to be developed, are owned by someone else, and we'd have to find a way to acquire them. Another thought is to decide whether we want to do open parking spaces still, or if we want to look at parking garages. I know that, that's always a road that every town and city's got to cross. And one of the most recent ones that did happen was for downtown Gilbert. So possible solutions are parking options, increasing those in the New Territory Square as we move forward with that development in the future, as that one's starting to move forward now. And we could include shuttle options to bring them into the downtown area. That'll help accessibility if they have to park way out. We also include possibly purchasing vacant land for parking spaces. That would be the next best option. So on your left, you see the Gilbert Heritage District Parking Guide, all the new parking garages and the parking spaces they have. And then on your right, we have this, the pieces of land that the town owns. And most of those pieces are already filled within the downtown, and some of them are right-of-way. So we don't have the, we don't have the luxury like Gilbert did to suddenly have a bunch of parking garages in the back. But we do have possible solutions in the future when it comes to Territory Square, and then also buying other properties to start slowly adding more parking into our inventory that we have in the downtown. And this big chunk in the north is Territory Square. So these bits right here, we can look at maybe adding parking there. And like I said, maybe adding a shuttle service or some form of transportation to help people get downtown. And that concludes what I found on that subject.
Marty Sella, can you go back into your presentation at, at the one that talks about Gilbert? That one I am intimately familiar with.
Yes. Ooh, that's not the one. Alright, give me a hot second. Yeah.
Okay, when, you, you used a, a term that I, that I, I thought I'd better address, because you used the term, it was suddenly there. The areas that you see that are west of Gilbert Road there, all those parking areas, one was a construction yard in the 80s. Um, a lot of that was an old trailer park. And there were several areas that were in, old industrial parking areas. And the town had a very visionary town manager that said, if the town is, downtown is ever going to develop and bring in high-volume use, we're going to have to have close proximity parking because people don't like to walk.
Right.
They want to, they want to be right there. And what kicked this whole thing off was Joe's Barbecue. And thankfully, there was close proximity parking, but now with everything else that's happened, um, with the Hale Theater and all these businesses, all these restaurants, the only reason that they're, well, I shouldn't say the only, one of the reasons that they're prospering and they're such a draw is because it's convenient parking, and people can get in and out of, out of the downtown and park close by. I'm, I'm trying to think very optimistically and think that our downtown could be a replica of something like that. Doesn't have to be that, but it could be something like that. And I'd hate to be hamstrung if a, you know, just pick a, pick a restaurant name out of the air, you know, a Garcia's or Serrano's, a, you know, an Olive Garden. If they came in and wanted to plop down, they would say, you know, I'd love to come to your community, but I'm going to need parking, and I look at our downtown, and the blocks are extremely narrow. I mean, they're not even 200 feet deep, some of them. And so we, we could hamstring ourselves really quickly with a, you know, a prized, you know, restaurant coming in, and, and then having them look at us and say, sorry, you know, you, you might be able to have a little restaurant, but something like this, they would walk away. And that's what we really need, something that's going to bring a lot of traffic in, a lot of people in, to, to make that downtown area thrive. So when we were doing, previously when we were doing our, I, I thought it was part of the general plan, I had talked about, what are we doing, and, and the thought was raised then that, well, a traffic slash parking study is in the works to address that. And I, I'm a very strong proponent of that, because that is critical, I think, to make this downtown thrive, is adequate parking in close proximity.
Those are all very valid points, and I think, looking forward, this will all definitely be necessary. As I slowly see our downtown starting to garner more and more businesses, and as one leaves, like one immediately takes its place. So there's, it's coming. And you're correct in your observation that we do need to make sure that we not only do the study, but we plan for it long-term.
I know what Gilbert did was as, they put the word out to all the owners back in there that, when they wanted to sell, that the town wanted to buy. And, and so the town went in and paid them fair market value and just assembled all those pieces of land, because they weren't the big contiguous pieces that you see here, they were smaller pieces that they assembled so that this could happen, and it has turned out to be a jewel for Gilbert.
So do you see areas in here that we should start buying up?
Yeah, I, that's why I think we need to do some sort of a study, because we need to be strategic in, in what we do in, in getting those properties. And, and, you know, Gilbert had to go out on a limb and, and spend some money to sit on a piece of property for a few years to get those to amalgamate and come together, but boy, it's really paid off for them.
Right.
So that's the second time tonight traffic study was mentioned, parking and tra, and traffic. And I guess I'd like to know, what, what is going on with the town of Florence traffic study? Because when we heard about, I think it was the development going on on 287, right? And we asked about the traffic, and it's the one that has the single entrance and, and egress. And we asked, and there was a traffic study done, I assumed it was by us, but apparently it's by Pinell County, since we don't have our traffic study. And I am getting complaints already now because the residents are just trying, starting to understand the impact that that's going to have on them trying to get to work every morning of an additional 300 houses on that road. So I would guess that, I would say that it's important that the town of Florence get our act together and have our own traffic study, because we live here, and we're the ones impacted. And it's already happened on Hunt Highway, and we're creating a problem on 287. And my fear is that with all the planned development, we are kind of flying blind. There doesn't seem to be a plan as to what the right traffic flow can be and what it should allow.
And, and part of that was, I believe that the development you're talking about, and Marty Sella, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was, as development happens within the town, their engineer is required to produce a traffic impact study, much like the parking facility that we looked on at this evening.
If applicable, they're supposed to provide us with a traffic impact statement or a traffic impact study.
And the, the issue arises is that you have independent engineers doing separate impact studies all over, none of which gets amalgamated into one to see what the cumulative effect is.
Exactly.
And that's where I think you're talking about, we need to have something that brings it all together, and perhaps derives some of the studies that, that the engineers are doing. We give them some information and say, hey, this road is rated for 20,000 cars a day, and this area was general planned to produce this, you are upping that amount, we need to, we need to do some thinking about. Because I think we're, we're kind of getting disparate solutions, and we're, we're not seeing the cumulative effect in a lot of areas. So that's, that's a good point.
And, and already, I think everybody knows, Adaway's all backed up, right? And we just approved, and I understand it's a very minimum impact, but all these try, vehicles trying to turn left or right without a suicide lane, it's, it's more, more backup.
Well, I was going to ask to have that added to the agenda next, at the next meeting, the Hunt Highway improvement issue, not only Adaway, but also Arizona Farms. And my question is, how many more, how many people are going to have to get hurt before we do something about it? But I like the way you're talking now about, you know, a comprehensive plan that includes, you know, Florence, the town down Florence, but also Anthem, which is, I mean, there's a huge population that continues to grow there, and we're putting more and more pressure on that Hunt Highway. And I'm just, you know, it's not only inconvenient, but it's also a hazard. People are going to get hurt, people have been hurt. So how many more people are going to have to get hurt before something is done about that? Agreed, alright? Agreed?
It looks like our 459 measure is going down in flames too, which would have provided more money to do that, so.
But there's money out there somewhere.
Yes, please, and I, I should have recognized Councilmember Mendoza, and we appreciate you being here as our council liaison, and I neglected to do that at the beginning of the meetings, but we, we thank you for being here, so, yes, please.
Um, just, uh, just for information, myself and Lisa Garcia had met with the Pinell, Pinell County Manager and Supervisor McClure, trying to work on a, on an, an IGA for the construction of Hunt Highway from Magma Road, which would be the portion of Pinell County coming towards us, all the way up to, um, Magic Ranch. They said they've got that all set, ready to go, they have the monies for it. We're trying to work with them so that when we do our portion from Franklin up to Magic Ranch, that we can benefit from, to keep our costs down, that we can use, you know, their, their contractors and stuff. Um, and I think the only problem they have is that section that's within Magic Ranch to include the railroad tracks. That's going to take a little bit longer to do because of the railroad track. But we are definitely in, you know, we're, from what the manager told us, that there's going to be an IGA coming down the Pike here shortly, and hopefully we'll have some dates and, and some information on how that's going to progress.
That will be welcome, welcome news to a lot of the traveling public, so, thank you, I appreciate the, we, we appreciate that input. Anything else on this subject?
So for, for parking, we said that we feel like we're good where we are right now, right?
Well, we, we have, we can sustain what we.
Do we have anything, any metrics, or what's driving, so what's the recommendation of when to address this problem? So projected growth, do we have any metrics that say we should start to address this within a certain timeframe?
I can start researching it now, just to see if there is a timeframe, we just, but for now, we just need to maybe look at possible locations, and then kind of wait and see if maybe those will open up for us, or if there are other solutions we can also follow. Another one as well is Territory Square, as that moves forward, we can apply the parking into those planning stages.
I, I agree with Commissioner Vanderstark raises a valid point, and I, I don't want, I know you have enough to do anyway, but be a good idea to have, hey, if this happens, this happens, if this happens, this happens. So it's not, oh, we got to do stuff now and run around here, hair on fire, so, but thank you, and I guess, good point.
Okay, with that, 7C, future agenda items.
I have nothing for the next agenda item, or the next agenda, so we will not be having a meeting next Thursday. I will probably have a, is it AutoZone? The AutoZone? We'll probably have an AutoZone design review coming through for the Anthem commercial area in December. And that is it.
Okay, item eight, call to the commission.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, you will be posting publicly that the meeting is canceled next week, right?
It's already posted.
You are a rock star.
It's already posted.
Rock star.
Okay, call to the commission for current events or requests for future agenda items.
Well, request for future agenda, I'd like to have discussion on Hunt Highway improvement added to the agenda.
And I would, I, I totally agree with you, but maybe we should wait until this, um, our, our liaison here gets a little bit more information so we can have some meat to chew on versus.
Okay.
Kind of shooting in the dark, I guess.
For clarification, are you talking about Hunt, like Hunt, this section, Hunt and Adaway, that area?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think he's talking about the other part.
Yeah, the special, the last time I brought this up, it, what came back to me was, well, it's been put off till 2024. So, and I, in my mind, that's not acceptable. Agreed, improving, improving Hunt Highway, so that's, that was the feedback I, we had last time I brought this up.
I guess that should be maybe a once a month, or once every six weeks, we just put it on the agenda and get an update.
Okay.
Okay, any other current events, anything like that, or? I, I know that, that the town is, once again, in the cool season, and we're doing second and fourth Saturdays with the Farmer's Market, and what, fourth, fourth Fridays?
Third Friday.
Third Fridays with live music and whatnot downtown, if you haven't, if you've held yourself to that, that's fun.
The inaugural one for this season, it was less than stellar.
Oh, it'll, it'll pick up when people realize what's happening down there, so.
We'll talk off, off mic.
Alrighty. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
We'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
Have a motion by Council, or Commissioner Bat, Capalongo, and a second by Commissioner Vanderstark. All in favor, please say aye.
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 5-0, thank you, we're adjourned.